Was that one done with that last year?
No, this is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Godvout.
Here.
Commissioner Noonan.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen is absent prior notice. Commissioner Aaron's is absent. Commissioner Frerick.
Here.
Commissioner Lotner is absent prior notice. Commissioner Popa.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Here.
And Commissioner Badun.
Here.
And we have a call.
Thank you. I'll ask if there are any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented. John?
I got two. One you could put as number seven, and it's approval of approval to install the fencing at Veronica Valley. It's a bid I got, and I passed it out to everybody. So it's Veronica Valley fence fencing bid.
Second, your second one?
Second one, the person isn't here. Tom is here. Can we put him as right at the beginning, like point zero zero? He's going to talk to us about planting trees.
Planting trees?
Right before number one, because he's he's busy. It's tree planting purchase for the Veronica Valley, and he'll explain it all.
Is that for just for discussion, or is there an action involved?
There'll be an action.
There'll be an action item. Oh, yeah, that'll be an action item.
So you want to throw that as item zero under discussions and action items?
Yes, put it zero, and the other one's going to be an action item two, number seven. And we'll probably need a motion on these changes.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Support.
Okay, we have a motion of support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. And does anybody have any conflict of interest with any of the items on this today's agenda? Hearing none, moving on. A public comment at this time? Ask if anybody wants to make a public comment? Staff comments?
Couple of things. I hit it out, our planning department procedures. I also have up here open meetings act, and I have the 2024 budget rules to see if somebody wants to refresh around those. Also today, I received a proposal from somebody that wants to use our parks, I think once once a month. So I will be gathering more information on that, sending it out to everybody, and that will be on the agenda probably next month.
Okay. Okay, moving on to consideration of the March 6, 2024 meeting minutes. I do have a correction to it. Under approval of agenda, request to add to the agenda where it says discussion to a request for proposal for gazebo, that should say at Old Settler's Park, not at Miles Kimberly. I don't I don't think we moved it. And then, actually, just a note for myself. Noonan said he would investigate the issue with the parcel across the street.
Yes.
I'll ask that when we get to our committee report, if you've got an update.
Yep.
Okay. Any other adjustments, corrections, or changes to the minutes of the March meeting? Don?
Just a question. I wasn't at the last meeting, but about the St. Mary's School request to use Miles Kimberly Park after hours. Is there a lease agreement with that and liability issues? They were all taken care of, I assume.
Yeah.
That's all. Very good.
Anything else related to March 6th agenda? I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting.
So moved.
Second, with John Walter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have approved minutes. Unfinished business, 2024 proposed meeting schedule. This is the change on this is nothing changing the dates or the times. They are just now specifying a date by which time any you want any agenda items added to a meeting, you'll do it by that date if at all possible. Anything else to add on that, Gail?
Nope, you got it right.
Okay, moving on to the discussion action items, and tree plantings at Veronica Valley Park. Tom can tell you everything. Yes, would you give our name and your township, please?
Tom Adams, and I work for the Conservation District part-time and work with land users a lot with tree planting, not a forester, but I have background in tree planting and just sort of development.
You can have a seat, please, Tom. If you have a seat, you'll be closer to our microphones to pick up your voice.
Should we move that stuff?
Huh?
We should move that.
We've been planting trees at Veronica Valley now, that might be 12 years, maybe it's more, I don't know, so we're in that neighborhood. We have some enclosures there where we fenc them in so the deer don't eat them, which we don't fenc them in, the deer eat most everything, not everything, most everything. Every year, we order trees. This is a little different than what we usually go through. We usually just order the trees, submit the bill. According to Steve Christensen, it's a budget item as far as maintenance, but we order somewhere around 40, 50 trees each year, and sometimes have a group of people get together and plant them. Basically, what it's all about, Cam is well aware of it, she's been a part of that on numerous occasions. The trees that we've put on the list, replant for this year, mostly all replanting is white oak, burro, swamp white oak, tulip poplar, American hazelnut, red osier dogwood, white fawn dogwood. Buzz from the Conservation District has put together a bill, he's discounted it 10%, which we do every year. The total for two, four, six, eight, and seven different species comes to with a discounted price, $223 and around $0.20. I'll give you a copy of the invoice here when we're done here. Any questions or clarifications?
You do this every year, don't you?
We do this every year. Right, yeah.
And there's, I mean, the conceptual design for the park has has locations for the additional plantings, so I assume these are put in in accordance with that design?
Yeah, it's been agreed upon a long, long time ago where they go in their fenced-in areas. There's a few areas outside the fence where we plant trees to blend in with everything else that's there. We are introducing some native, we only recommend native species, and we are introducing some native species from Southern Michigan in there. In the interest of climate change, that there will be species of trees likely to live here in the park 40, 50 years from now. I've done the same sort of thing on a piece of my own property where I planted tulip poplar 40-some years ago, and I probably planted somewhere around 20, 30 trees that have grown up, they're somewhere probably eight, 10 inches diameter now, producing seeds and becoming a natural part of landscape. Tulip poplar is one we don't have around here naturally. There is a few here and there, there's some going growing at Veronica Valley Park, and there is some others in the rest of the community. Bottom line is, there's a handful of trees that we don't naturally have here, so we're trying to get them introduced so that there is trees for the next generation.
Well, I can make a motion that we approve this invoice to the Lilinaw Conservation District dated 3/25/24 for the amount of $223.20.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a passed motion. Thanks, Tom, for what you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, so now that moves on to Veronica Valley pond fish report. I think I see Heather's here in the audience, and I guess soon we'll have a vote on the expenditure for the purchase of the fish for this year.
Okay, so I believe that Gail provided you guys with two documents, one that's a couple pager, and one that is an invoice. So I'm going to kind of talk about the one that's a couple pager first, and most of you are probably pretty familiar with this, but for those of you who are a little newer, this is one that I put together every year, kind of demonstrating the history of what we've stocked in the pond, and to give us a little better idea of where the fish costs are coming from and how they look in comparison to at least the year prior. Fish costs, even for us in the state, our fish hatcheries are our biggest expenditure when we look across the entire fish reach to the year program. Fish can be highly expensive, and so there's a lot of variation in cost from year to year. It can be not a very static cost, change cost, it can be pretty volatile from year to year, so I kind of try to use this to help explain what's going on with that jump, because unfortunately, every time we talk about this, the price gets a little bit higher. So this year, if we stick with the same plan that we have used in years past, which would be on the Parks and Rec Commission's card, it would be a purchase of 2,000 hybrid bluegill that on paper ranged from five to seven inches. What we typically get is anything from four to about eight or nine inches. Those fish this year cost $4.08 apiece. That is a 68 cent increase over what we paid for those same fish last year. We also split the shipping, so the Kids' Fish Day Committee purchases an additional 1,500 fish, and so we split the cost between the two organizations 50/50. So it's 203 miles, they charge us $4 a load in miles, only one way. That actually went down this year, so it went down a whole dollar. So that portion, the half, breaks down to $406 for a grand total of $8,566. That is a $1,234 increase over what we paid in 2023. I always do a little shopping. I really like the fish farm that we purchased these fish from, and I told you guys this before, he loves the fact he provides fish for our Kids' Fish Day event. He grades the pond, actually, he graded the pond, I think, a month ago, and then leaves it. So whatever's in that pond, we get. So we're guaranteed our 3,500, but whatever's in the pond above that, we get as well. That's why the size discrepancy, because there's some smaller fish in there and some larger fish. So he's been really, really great to work with, but in due diligence, I do call five or six other providers across the state and try to get a price comparison, make sure we're getting the best fish at the lowest possible cost. The end is, once again, the lowest. The only thing that I could find that was even close was Harriet Hills. I always check with Harriet Hills because their pools are spatially too. Their delivery cost works out to be about $75 cheaper, however, those fish are $4.30 apiece. So by the time you put the whole package together, we're still money ahead to go with Lagus's Fish Farm over Harriet Hills or the other four facilities that I called this year. Along with that, we've made a little bit of change in where we're putting those fish. There's a big pond out front that we use for the Kids' Fish Day event, and then there's the two smaller long ponds in the back. After watching how people utilize those ponds the past four or five years, quite evident, obviously, that most people are fishing at the front. It's highly visible. There are a few people that like to practice fly fishing or know about the long ponds in the back that'll fish back there, but by and large, the bulk of the activity is the front pond. So we used to kind of split it a little, where we put 1,000 fish in the back and 2,500 in the front, and what we've done the past couple of years is we put closer to like 400 fish, three or 400 fish in each of those two back ponds, and then put the bulk of the fish up in the front pond as it continues to gain in popularity. So a little bit of change, if you look at the if you look at the table, we've kind of changed the distribution a little bit, and we're kind of eyeballing it anyways as as we're taking those fish off the truck. But those are the two major changes, just redistributing fish a little better to make sure that they're getting utilized up in the front pond, and then our our $1,234 increase over last year.
Heather, there's a lot of new people. How many years have you been doing this?
This will be my 14th Kids' Fish Day.
That Kids' Fish Day and using Miles Kimberly Park for for soccer and everything are two of the biggest events that we we use our park for. This is an enormous event. I know the Lake Association puts money into it, too, and but we have to recommend this go to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And if no one's got any more questions, I recommend that we approve this purchase of $8,566 to Lagus Fish Farm dated March 29, 2024. He has a invoice dated that, and that we submit this to the Board of Commissioners for approval.
Support?
I have a support from Mr. Noonan, a motion from Mr. Popa. Any discussion? Gail?
Okay, you can do a separate motion for that extra fish. The extra fish purchase.
It's all in here.
The 500.
I guess I didn't understand the question. You have one invoice.
Purchasing from two different.
Do you want to take over from here?
I just always say that goes by history, because this is something that's up, and I'm not very good at explaining it.
So what historically has occurred is is the Parks and Rec Commission, I don't know how to word it, also gives $500 in support of the Kids' Fish Day fish purchase, if that makes sense. So you guys always make two purchases. One is the invoice that I presented, and the other is an additional $500 to the Kids' Fish Day Committee in supporting their fish purchase as well.
And I'm glad you asked that. This has to go to the Board of Commission. That $500 will do that internally with a different motion. That doesn't have to go to the Board of Commissioners, but I'm glad you remembered that. Gail did, I guess. So this is the motion for the purchase of the fish from Lagus for that has to go before the Board of Commissioners?
Correct.
Okay.
Did I say?
So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Free to move this to the Board of Commissioners for their approval. Do you want to make that second motion for the $500 before to be contributed to for the purchase of the fish for the Kids' Committee? Did our first motion, was it voted on? It was voted on and passed.
Yep. Turn them hearing aids up, John.
Turn them on, John.
I can make another motion, and I'll read it from last year's motion that Gail pointed out. I move that the Parks and Rec Commission approve the purchase of fish for the Lake Lilinaw Lake Association's Kids' Fish Day Committee in amount of $500.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you.
It is always confusing.
It is, but thank you guys all once again for continuing to support this. I know I probably sound like a broken record, I say this every year, but when we look statewide at our Kids' Fish Day events, we have to stay in as part of Fish Division, this is the most largely attended and the most consistent and the most educational kids fishing event that we've got in the state. So so the fact that you guys are always willing to at least entertain this purchase is much appreciated and is not going unnoticed, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Heather. It gets better every year, and thank you.
Well, if I could just thank the community and you guys, we could, obviously, you are a part of the county, but then again, you could turn your head and say, no, we don't want to do this. Well, I think what makes this work is the the community involved, between the businesses, I mean, while I call 14 businesses step up, I'm not very good at like pulling at people that 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 Pete used to do. He used to have these meetings and everyone, he made everybody feel so guilty, and everyone showed up at these meetings, and maybe it was a, I don't know, but we sit around for two hours, and what has happened is we don't have those well-attended meetings, what we have is a well-attended fish day, and then folks need to step up to make this thing happen. They all do it, through the businesses, through the volunteer, through the lake associations, through you guys. And so I know the community appreciates it, so if I may be so bold as to not give any hats, okay?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item two on the discussion and actions, Miles Kimberly Park Project Engineering Wood Fiber Mulch. Last month, we passed, we we approved the going before the board for the grant, but we didn't go before, we did not approve the actual installation or the project to put the engineered wood fiber in at Miles Kimberly Park. So this that's what this is going to follow up to get to do that approval.
So should we do that first, try to get a motion?
Well, yeah, you'll have to go to a motion on that, or you want to discuss the project first, if you want. I mean, I'll leave it up to the committee. Don?
So, yeah, thank you. Learning process is really important, and appreciate Gail and Charlie to figure it out for us, but so if we say yes to the project, what we'd like to do is go back to the board and ask that we waive the bid policy, because getting RFPs for this small of a project is pretty cumbersome, and it's pretty clear cut that there isn't a lot of competition out there for different sources. So again, if we want to go through with this, I would like to go forward with a RAP grant, that's through our MMRMA, our insurance agency, and it's possible because this is considered a new project. We haven't ever put down wood chips for the safety of those lovely little children that go to Miles Kimberly Park. Although we've done the other two parks, we've never done Miles Kimberly. So it does qualify for this grant, which is a 50% match grant. A little bit of technicality, they don't cover in-house labor, so I'm trying to compare a little bit apples to oranges, but the gist of it is there is a company out of Florida that provides you with these engineered wood chips, and they can bring in the 205 cubic yards that we need. They would blow it in from the semi truck, and then we would smooth it out for a total cost of $14,145. Another quote that we got was from Deering's right here in Lelandaw County, and they can get it to us delivered for $5,700. Scott Bradley has projected labor cost would be between $800 and $1,000 if he did it, or he paid somebody to do it. So that would make the total project if we bought from Deering's with spreading it at 67, 32, 50, so less than half. The other quote that we got was from Home Depot, and it was $14,500 and some dollars. So pretty much, I have a feeling they're actually contracting it with this other company, to be honest. So my recommendation is to stay local, and I'm kind of going off something that you guys said about, oh, Tom said about volunteers or community, or what Alan said. You know, can we also look at maybe making this a volunteer opportunity to get people to the park to help spread it with the help of Scott or whoever's in Scott's position when the load comes? So that's kind of the path I'd like to get going forward. We're really fortunate that Lori already started the grant application for us, and it's pretty straightforward, and I think just finishing it up with these details on how our, you know, the RFPs shake shook out, we should be able to get that in in plenty of time for the April 10 deadline for the grant, and then we should know within a couple weeks if we get awarded that 50% grant. That's pretty much all I know.
Okay, now, I still had a comment.
Okay.
In that we need to excavate out down to 12 inches.
Correct.
Before they can, before this other company would blow the product in, or we or we put the product in if we're doing it with local labor. I don't know that.
That quote from the company from Florida does not include any of that prep work.
And.
Scott's quote did include.
Include the excavation of that 12 inches.
Yes.
To prepare the bed to get the fiber in.
Yes.
Okay.
One other concern that I have is it's in the plan to replace the equipment at Miles Kimberly?
Eventually, yeah.
I mean, if we put these wood chips down, I mean, they need to be there at some point, but if we, can we reuse them? Can we move them to the side when we do the project to replace the equipment, or are we going to be redoing this all over again in some?
Depending upon when we would do that project, you'd end up taking the existing material and moving it. You'd probably want to screen it to get only the wood chips saved, and then the topsoil would get moved to someplace else, and then you would replace the equipment, then come back in and put the wood chips that you took out and screened out back in the hole, and then you would add to get your 12 inches of of material when you're when all is said and done. That's essentially the sequence you would have to do to when they do the replacement of the equipment. And they may not have to move it all, because.
Yeah, depending on placement.
Depending upon how they bring the old, to get the old equipment out and the new equipment in.
So, yeah, and our and our new master plan, that those location of playground equipment is going to stay where it is. So if we did change out something, moving it, I don't think would be as big a deal as you think, maybe. And also, I think the safety of our young people on that playground is number one, and I don't want to wait till we do something more with that park, because.
Right now, that sand and gravel is unacceptable.
It is.
Some kid falls, he gets hurt.
Even though we hope to one day replace that and make it a really nice new place for the time being, I don't see when that's going to happen. So I'd like to go forward with making it safe.
Cam, was Scott's estimate of excavation based on the 12 inches deep?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's what it was recommended in the MMRMA, right?
Yeah, we approved it. It's all compacted, too. They talk about it being 12 inches, you can just throw it in there, but you have to compact it to 12 inches. Okay, do you want to make a motion?
I don't know what I can say. I just have a question about, I look very close to this park, and honestly, I feel like it doesn't get as get used as much mainly just because, I mean, Glen Lake is just on the road, and they have, what, $2 million playground? And I feel like it gets used when the soccer field's getting used, you know, for the littler kids, when their older siblings are playing and things like that. So I think it's great to replace playground equipment, first off, because, I mean, I played on that playground equipment probably 20 years ago. So I kind of agree with Casey as to maybe we're going backwards on this a little bit. Maybe you should be putting playground equipment in before you're putting in these wood chips. I also did look into these wood chips a little bit, and I think you have to have, and I could be wrong, but I, and they have them at Glen Lake, but they're black mats that you have to put either at the base of a slide or below a swing. And so I don't know if that was factored into your grant application or your presentation.
That's an option we can use, think about. I think it costs money, too.
Correct, but I do think to be ADA compliant, you have to have them.
Hmm, I'm not sure about that.
But I could be wrong.
You could, I don't think you have to...
I don't think ADA, the American Disabilities Act?
I believe so.
Really?
Or maybe it has to be a certain amount of height to avoid them, I'm not sure.
Well, the depth of the chips is measured by the, the distance of the fall. So, if you've got an eight-foot fall, you have what the 12-inch chip requirement. So, we've actually taken the height of the highest piece of equipment and calculated the depth of the chips we need based on that. So, that's, then that worked out to 12 inches.
Yeah, I like your points. I just wonder what makes most sense, though? If we don't do something to improve the safety, and it's been highlighted in 2017 and in 2022 that that's a, a safety hazard, then are we pulling out those old equipment in the meantime until we have the money to replace it with newer equipment? I guess I'm trying to weigh the difference between the two and I guess I would rather make sure for, with grant support, you know, some, a safer environment until that progress can be made. It's decision of the board, though, obviously.
Yes.
As far as a, say, like an insurance liability, from my understanding is that you do have to have a base, a regulated base for like swings and stuff like that, so that you're, you're covered if somebody gets hurt. If you have no base, no comfortable base, and somebody jumps off a swing and they get hurt, would that be a liability to the parks? So, I think that's, that's one thing you have to look at is you could wait, put the chips down before you get new equipment, but in the meantime, if you're falling short of, of being at the liability level, you could, there could be a problem there.
I mean, this, would, the engineered wood chips do require an annual maintenance and periodic augmentation of the material? And at some future point, a number of years, you have to come in and essentially screen out the material because it decomposes and turns into topsoil. And that topsoil gets compressed. And now you've lost your fall capacity when a kid lands on it. So, you gotta, you gotta keep correcting it. So, yes, you need to do that. I will tell the audience that we, we did look at the price of putting in, the poured in rubber mat stuff and for Old Settlers Park, it was $127,000 to do that. Totally cost prohibitive as far as, as far as the county's availability of providing funding. But you were just referring to mats at the bottom of the slide and underneath the swing. Totally different, but they are expensive too, though. I don't think they're required, but we do have to use, we have to make sure the wood chips are not just blown in, they have to be compacted.
That was my other question, was were you worried about them washing away erosion? How do they stay? Because I mean, Miles Kimberly is on a slope. Like, it's not a flat.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why you're doing the excavation down to 12 inches and then adding the material because it's not going to flow away, but then compact it down. John?
I think we ought to move forward with it and get these chips. Right now, people can get hurt out there. It may be a year or two before we get new equipment. It's not going to be that complicated in putting new equipment with wood chips out. That's part of the installation, but I think we should move forward with this. And I think all the work that everyone done is great. But I don't know what the actual motion is because you reviewed three plans, so when you're ready to make your motion...
So, I would move that the Lelandau County Parks and Recreation Commission support the application of wood, engineered wood fiber, is that the right term? At Miles Kimberly Park in the playground? And we don't have to do a cost to re, or...
We're going to have to go before the board, I think.
Yeah.
So, we need to tell them what the estimated cost is going to be? But you, I think you have it for the, the Deering's plus the, the labor, the county labor installation, right?
Yeah, that has to be in the motion.
So, at a cost of not to exceed $6,732.50.
I'll second that.
So, this is the motion to get approval from the Parks and Rec Commission?
Mm-hmm.
So, then...
No.
We vote on her motion and it goes in front of the board.
So, is it to recommend that the Parks and Rec Commission, recommend to the Board of Commissioners, right? No?
Yes. Yes, exactly, Lori.
Is there a vendor?
Sure.
Is there a vendor in that cost?
Deering's. Deering's.
Did you say that in your motions?
Oh, yeah, we should.
To use Deering's?
For the cost of?
Tree and tree services.
And you got that.
I think you covered it all.
I second.
So, we have a motion and a second?
Well, maybe she should read back the motion.
Discussion, yes. Now, if we get the grant money, our contribution is less than $4,000, so do we really have to go before the board? So, it depends how fast we...
You still have to...
We still have to go before the board, we just don't have to go...
Because you're requesting them to waive the bid policy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And again, the bid would be, I mean, the grant would cover half of the material and the delivery, but not the $1,000 of labor.
And we would go ahead with this project regardless of whether we get the grant or not.
Let's do it.
Yes, thank you.
Good.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Thanks for what everybody did.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that? You made the motion, Campbell?
Don Ferriick was the second. Campbell was the motion and we had one, have one negative. Our motion passed. Lelandau County Parks Ad Visitor's Guide and Color Tour Magazine. Gail, this is an item you added?
Yeah, this was emailed to our office to see if we wanted to advertise this again this year. So, it looks like, let's see, this year, the Visitor's Guide to advertising that would be $755 and then to advertise in the Color Tour, it's another $535.
And we've always done it?
We have, but it's consistently gotten more expensive over the last handful of years. It used to kind of just be a normal thing that we didn't even think about, but now it's getting to the point where it's getting expensive.
I mean, now, discussion before, I, I don't know that we get the value to the parks by having the advertising. So, is there's another reason to do the advertising in the, in those two publications from the Enterprise? Or do we just not do it?
I think there's a good argument for it going either way. I do think that there's probably some value out of the Visitor's Guide more so than the Color Tour because, I mean, there are, you go somewhere, everybody picks up a Visitor's Guide and looks at what's going on, but the, the Color Tour, I don't know if that's really all that beneficial, in my opinion.
Good point.
So, we have to vote on both of them right now, though, or...
Yeah, because it, there's a dead, whatever the deadline is, we've always kind of been in crunch time with this before we forget about it and it gets kicked down the road and...
Yeah, they said April 9th or 10th, they could hold up.
Yeah.
The longest they could go.
For the fall, we have to decide now, though? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. They go together. Why that is, I don't really know. Maybe, maybe the fall one you can waive, but we've always done it at the same time.
And then the last couple of years, we've had a discussion about whether we should change the pictures for the one in the fall, to actually have fall foliage colors instead of what's there.
Yeah, we talked about that.
That would be nice, if we're going to do it.
I would make a motion that we approve the ad in the Visitor's Guide, but neglect the Color Tour this year.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion? CIP Projects and Submit is the next item. We got a request from Gail to provide any new updated projects or new projects for the CIP. I pivoted to each of the committees to, if they wanted them to submit anything. I haven't seen anything where either of the other committees submitted anything. We didn't submit anything for Old Settlers, so I think that's the status of this as it is. Any discussion? Just a comment. I've, I've done CIPs in the past and they're, they're sitting there and I consider the CIPs as a black hole, pretty much. They don't go anywhere. So, I'm kind of disillusioned with the whole concept of it. I mean, just a comment. My, my other comment will be, we're going to put the new Parks and Rec Plan together for approval by January of 2025. Coming out of that plan, which is the vision for the parks in the future, we should then quantify the projects which would be required to execute that plan. And then the mechanism is the 2025 CIP, we will go in and put all the projects we need for that next five-year cycle in that CIP. So, that should be the sequence, as I see it. We would get the new plan together, the revised plan together, then we would update the CIP to reflect that plan. And obviously, sort of like government, we have a budgeting process, we have a, we have a project, a process to approve the things, the authorizations for, for expenditures. So, you know, we'll try to work with the plan, but that's the way I would see it going. Any other discussion at this point? Moving on to the approval of the financials. Again, we have this one line item that's showing it's 600 and something percent over budget. We know that there's a charge that's been miscategorized in the budget line item. Gail, what has to happen to fix that?
Dr. Maintenance is their department.
So, Maintenance has to make a submission to accounting to get them to put in a journal entry or something to correct it?
Or just leave it.
I mean, otherwise, we've only spent 3.23% of our budget so far. Obviously, we haven't gotten into the busy season or the expenditures.
I make a motion to approve the financials as presented.
Support.
Any discussion further? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, updates. Parks and Rec Plan. Over the last month or so, we did some beating around of Gosling Zubek about their estimates and whatnot for doing an update of the plan. They gave me two different estimates, one that is essentially a full-blown plan with a, with a full-blown community input phase to it. And the other was then to strip out most of that community input phase and essentially depend on public hearings for the public input. Both estimates, in my estimation, were too high. So, we are going, go ahead with an RFP to solicit bids to essentially do the, the new plan. And Gail's got that in process?
Yes. County administrators sent the scope of services out and we're waiting to get the RFP back from corporate counsel, so then I can go out on the website.
And the Parks and Rec Plan Committee will meet once we finally know where we're going with that. The subject of the summer help, talked to Jerry Coleman yesterday. He's doing interviews today for Scott's replacement as well as identifying this, a person to augment the staff during the summer. Discussions with accounting and whatnot is we, our budget is limited to 528 hours for the summer help person. And therefore, but they don't have to, they don't have to do 20 hours a week for 26 weeks to get to 528 hours. They could actually work 35-hour weeks as long as they don't exceed the 528 hours. So, that's sort of where that stands right now. We'll wait to hear from Jerry about how these interviews go, about Scott's replacement. Obviously, with any replacement of this type, there's going to be a learning curve and probably some drop-off of...
Institution.
The processes, so we'll stand, stand by for what that's going to do and what, what will happen. Anybody else have any, any additional information on the summer help or anything of that? Okay, your new item, John, approval for the, the fencing at, the installation of the fencing at Veronica Valley.
Yeah, we discussed it at our last meeting to replace that split rail fence that is in Veronica Valley on Maple Valley Road. The posts are rotten, they fall over. If you lean against it, you might go down into a pile. So, I looked them over with Scott and I thought it was going to cost a couple thousand bucks to do it. He didn't have the time or the effort or help to do it. So, I went out to find someone to do it and low and behold, we got to have insurance. I talked to three people, or three entities. Two of them couldn't do it, but easily could. And in front of you, I handed out a bid and I thought it was pretty good. Scott is going to buy the railing before he leaves, hopefully. He told me he was gonna. And so, he's going to have the railing there and get it and this contractor is going to put it in. And there's no timeline, there's no clocks ticking or anything. It's a good fill-in job. But these posts are busted off at ground level and you're going to have to order them in as if it was a new installation. So, there isn't a lot of volunteer help to do it that can dig out old posts. This Jim came back with an interesting thing there, an option one. I think we should put foundation coating on those things so they won't rot off. And he wasn't sure exactly what he could do to put the stuff in, but he had a good estimate. And if we go ahead with this, I think we should approve an amount up to a certain amount and then, I think everybody's in favor. I would like to see that coating on those posts before they go into brown, otherwise they'll rot off again. These posts have been here for a long time, but they've been in poor condition for a long time. It's the typical cedar split rail fencing. And if there's no discussion, I think we can move forward.
Are the posts treated wood?
They're fair cedar.
They're just raw cedar?
It's cedar. Above ground, it lasts forever. Well...
Underground doesn't last.
Whenever Jim put it, or Grant put it up 40 years ago.
Been a long time.
Yeah. And it is, we thought about taking it all down and just leave it down. It was made for a driving range there, but we do find people parked there. There's a place to have picnic, I think there's a table there. And it kind of contains that parking area. And so, I'm talking with Scott and he says, let's just replace it all. It's only going to cost a few thousand bucks and let's do it. And it'll last longer than any of us here on the board will be around.
Is this considered a maintenance item or is it considered...
This is all maintenance, yes. It's not a new project. We also don't have to go in front of the board for this, so if we have a vote here, it's out of our maintenance budget and stuff. And I can make that motion if you're ready.
I'm ready for a motion, if you're...
I'll make a motion that we approve easily construction per bid dated March 29th, 24 to install the replacement split rail fencing, including foundation coating for a cost not to exceed $3,500.
Support.
We have motion support, any discussion? Just out of curiosity, the cedar versus some wallminized posts, is there any price difference on that or is there a reason why you want one over the other?
I've never seen wallminized split rail fence.
Not a split rail, but you could put a wallminized post... Not a split rail, but you could put a wallminized post in, you know, and one would look as nice maybe, I'm just curious, I'm sorry.
It'd probably look like something from a subdivision instead of a park.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to mill the posts for the split rail to go into.
Go through that.
They'd probably be more expensive.
Good question.
Probably more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Probably less environmentally friendly, too. I don't know about this foundation coating, I don't know what that's made of.
It's like a
A tar.
It's like a tarish. It sucks in and stuff.
Probably less toxic than the wallminized wood. Hey, John, is Scott reinstalling the sign?
That's a different issue, I forgot. Let's stay on this subject.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And moving on to reports and updates. Any report from Miles Kimberly Park?
Miles Kimberly, what you have in front of you here are conceptual plan update. The Miles Kimberly update, five-year update of the park. This will be incorporated into the five-year update for the whole Park and Rec Commission. You're free to take a look at it anytime you want. If you have any thoughts, suggestions, please let me know.
Because we're going to have one more re-edit by the
Kevin, Kevin with Kostin Kuebeck, he'll revise it one more time for us, just fine-tune it for anything we want to change. And earlier, before the meeting, we did a few things, three of us were looking at, gave a few suggestions.
But like Casey, anyone who's using it, it'd be nice if you took a look at it and gave it any impact.
Please do.
Has there been any public input into what's here?
No, I was refused public input, I don't understand why exactly. Gail might respond to that, but there'll be public input when we do the five-year for the whole Park and Rec.
There will be public input when it's part of the five-year plan.
Okay. But anyone here at the meeting can feel free to look at it.
That'd be appreciated.
And comment.
Can I, can I add to Miles Kimberly Park?
Sure.
That this, this board approved, I'm trying to think of how much money it was, but money towards composting display board. And we had a meeting last week and it's going forward. It should be up by May 29th is our hope because we're going to ask the Parks and Recreation, oh, I'm sorry, the Solid Waste Council to support a composting workshop at the barn, at the gardens there on May 29th. So we want the display up. So it is going forward. I know it's a little bit more delayed than we wanted it to be, but it's going to be great once we get it in the spring. So just an update.
What happens on 5/29?
We're going to ask the park or the Solid Waste Council to support a composting instructor. They do it every year, but usually it's inside a building. We want to take it outdoors and really do it hands-on. So we'll see on the 18th if they approve that.
Moving on to Old Settlers Park. Gazebo refurbishment, the RFP was reissued. We had a site visit meeting yesterday and one contractor showed up. Sounds like he's going to want to submit a bid, but we'll have to look at what the process is if we only get one bid. And that's where the status of that is.
Who was the contractor that showed up?
Lebo Construction from Suttons Beck. Moving on to the MMRMA Risk Management Report Items. Playground area surface. We will need to issue an RFP for the two phases of this project. Actually, it may not need a first RFP. The first one may not need an RFP. Essentially, the augmented material to be added to the existing playground area where the material already is, that's Phase 1. Phase 2 is, we've never actually put the wood chips in by the swing set. And that's like a 48-foot by 48-foot area, which is going to be somewhat significant. We would have to do the same process there we were doing at Miles Kimberly, which is excavated out down to 12 inches. And that's actually a fall height of 12 feet from the top of the bar. If some kid climbs up to the top of the swing bar and falls off. But anyway, so we will, we will make sure that that is the right thing. So that one's, that's the piece that might need an RFP because of the excavation requirement and blow-in material, compacted and all that stuff. Hopefully, we want that to go forward this year. We'll see where the money's, money's landing to do that. Looked at the monkey flower viewing platform, we had an issue because two sides of the platform have just posts with wires going across. And the risk analyst came in and said, no, some kid can get his stuck head, his head stuck in between the wires. Now, we've got lattice work on the other two sides. So if we just install lattice on the two sides that still have the wires exposed, I think that'll take care of it. And I'm going to ask Parks, the maintenance people to just do that. Just add lattice to those two sides. And hopefully, that'll take care of that item as far as the risk management assessment was concerned. When the dock goes in, in a few weeks, I'm going to ask that they make sure that there's no gap between the end of the dock and the shoreline. Which means, dig out some lake bed material nearby and fill the hole so there's no gap like there currently, like there was all of last year. That was a trip hazard finding that the guy came up with. And the last thing is, we had branches overhanging the stairs. So that's another maintenance item to go in and trim back any branches which are obstructing the stairs. So that's that. The other item we talked about was putting in porta-potties on the northeast side of the park. I talked to Jerry Coleman about them, the maintenance group, putting in a pad, a concrete pad to accommodate a standard and a handicap accessible porta-potty. And he's going to take, he's going to look at doing that. And doing that with county materials, county labor. Melinda's not here. Completing the Lanham Donation Project from 2022 where we wanted to get one of those bouncy things to install in the playground area. So I can't ask her what the status of that is. And the last item is install the boulders between the parking area and the playground area from, that's a 2022 item that you were looking at, Casey.
Zach would do it and probably any, anytime that we'd ask him, but if we're going to put the mulch and all that stuff, they're going to
Yeah, I want to make sure it's out of the way of construction materials. So don't impede that. Okay. So that's the items I have for Old Settlers. You got anything?
Yeah, I've got the update from last month when Scott was talking about the guy across the street. I left here, made a bunch of phone calls, I talked to Scott, and then called Zach Stans to get somebody else's number, and I finally got ahold of the landowner. And essentially, what he wants to do is pave his driveway. But there is an ingress and egress easement for that, for his property. But it's, he questioned whether he could improve upon that easement. And in my opinion, it would be no without approval of this board because it's only ingress and egress. You can maintain what the driveway, you can't improve it or make permanent changes.
So what was there was a gravel driveway.
And he wants to
He can keep gravel driveway, but he wants to pave it.
In my, that's my opinion of the situation. He is requesting to be on the agenda for May to come and talk to us and ask approval to be able to pave his driveway.
When I was at the park yesterday, there was, looked like there was a new driveway cut put in, but there's a whole bunch of flags.
See, I haven't been, I have not been by there. I only talked to him on the phone and he was making it sound like he wanted to pave what was there.
There's one driveway going this way and now there's a new cut that went in and then turned to the right.
Okay.
Which I didn't expect to see it.
I'm going to drive by there on my way home. And I The way he made it sound, that wasn't going on. He didn't make mention of that, but that's neither here nor there, I didn't.
Solving cleared out, solving cut.
Yes. So that's, I mean, that could bring up some, I also talked to the contractor, she called me after, she must have talked to Scott or somebody. And she was asking questions of it. And she said that they weren't going to do anything until they got an answer. And so I don't know what is going on there. I don't, and I don't know how the property lays out without
Yeah, I'm not sure where the property line is.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't, I know that that, I know there's one driveway there that goes across our property, but the property is very small over there and I don't know exactly where the corners are. So without seeing it on a map and everything else, I don't know how that, that all. But if they did excavating to our property, that's, that's not within the easement. The driveway's within the easement, not the property.
All right, if you would, take a look and we'll get a report back and keep pursuing it.
Okay, I can hook him by there in my own.
Anything from Old Settler, I mean, from Veronica Valley?
We have, the Saban contract has been delivered. So now we're just waiting for them to decide when they want to come out and start treating. Some people are like really concerned that certain areas are not treated, so I'll leave that to the experts. Basic maintenance issues, we got the fencing done. We need some painting. And I'm really curious as how they would paint that bridge, being how it's over the water. Because it's, it's, the paint's really coming off of that. And of course, we still have the cable issues that we need to deal with. But there is some basic maintenance, most of it's just maintenance stuff that needs to be done.
I haven't been over the
Well, the bridge has got the tall suspension over the water. So you would have to get a ladder up there and then you're going to be reaching around over the water to paint that one side that, you know, I don't know if a Simon Eagle or a lift could actually get it from the shore, but
Is the bridge decking painted?
There's, there's like a grate, there's a pad like in the center and there's a grate, but it's all the suspension part, the cables are all really rusted, you know? I don't know if anybody would get themselves a nice rusted sliver off of that, but it definitely needs some paint.
Be a marked improvement. That's an eyesore when you drive by there.
Yeah, it's
I've even suggested in the past that you don't paint it just one color, contrasting color like a white and a blue or something like that. And it would really liven it up and really make it look
Yeah, I just don't know how they would be able to paint the tall, in the center.
Is that, are the cables severely corroded?
They're rusty, I don't, they're not corroded to the point where I think they're unsafe, but they're, they're definitely rusty.
We know about those bridges, don't we?
Yeah.
Well, it's been something that's been talked about for quite some time as far as maintenance goes on painting that and we've questioned Scott on it and it's, obviously not something Scott can undertake. Seems like we looked into it at what, John, do you remember looking into painting the bridge?
We did, we didn't think it needs it.
I checked the, I checked the paint on it, it's not leaded paint, but it's not rusting out, it just
Looks scrubby.
Just looks funny. And we looked at it and we checked all the metal and material on it, you know, it wasn't digging and spalling. It's just old paint that's not leaded. And with my bridge, I'd leave it.
There's something to keep on the dock.
What's that?
This part here and the wooden show, this is a wood here.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's something that we would have to discuss if we really think it, I mean, for aesthetics, it should be painted. I mean, as far as they, it's not going to fall apart without paint at this point in time. But it does rust away.
Check with Jerry Coleman about whether in-house personnel could paint it.
He doesn't have anybody that could do it, it costs a fortune.
I think the answer, I think the answer is going to be no.
Right, so I don't think we should even go down that hole because
I would, I would go down there first and then if the answer's no, then we figure out how we get it done.
It would have to be prepped. And to prep it, then you're going to have to put something underneath it to capture everything. And then it would have to be primed. And we painted that bridge in cedar and it cost us a fortune to capture all that and to get underneath it and do it. And it's in real nice shape now. Being an observant person, as you go down the interstate highways, some of them they repaint and some still, you don't repaint, you just, the rust is a preservative, it's not a corrosive. Corrosiveness comes from underneath and stuff. But we looked that whole thing over, I wouldn't do anything to it. That's my two cents.
The one in cedar, they completely removed, didn't they? McCrayne picked it up, put it on a trailer, when, didn't they take
No, Easlin did that. He floated underneath it and sandblasted, I think with walnut shells and stuff. That was completely, oh, you're talking about the snowmobile one?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about
The road bridge.
Yeah, you're right, that one was hollowed away and that wasn't cheap.
No, they sent that to Wheelox and I
Yeah, I think they sent it there and blasted it and everything.
They did, yeah, well, it happened, somebody, somebody, it's a pretty good-sized bridge, maybe it wasn't quite the 14, 20, it's quite a good one.
That isn't the top of our list.
Well, no, look forward to the committee's recommendation of what they want to do.
Move on to the next subject.
Somebody with a parrot lighter can just hover above it.
It's a good summer project for you, John. Keep you out of your wife's hair.
All right.
Other than that, that's all I got.
Moving on to public comment, any
Wait, hold it, we're not going through everything yet, are we?
Yeah, that was through the agenda.
Got your split-rail fence?
Yeah, except John asked a question. Now, last meeting, is okay if I continue to Veronica Valley?
Yeah.
Last meeting, I talked about going out and getting a contractor to put the sign up, fix it up, and do the split-rail fence. Since last meeting, Scott fixed the sign up by himself. And so the sign is available and I think this whole commission can go out there and dig the holes and put it up. But I didn't have it in, in the bid. But John wanted me to cover it because it was in our minutes last time to say he would look for a contractor to do the sign and pick it, split-rail fence. And yada, yada, yada. And so in the meantime, he said, I'm repeating myself, but he said he fixed it, so we don't have to worry about that. Now it's just got to get carried over there and put up. And I guess our committee will worry about that. Unless you got a bunch of Boy Scouts that want to dig a hole.
I dig a, dig a hole for our sign anyways, that's one more.
Well, we're going to put it, I think, it was, remember, right in the middle of the driveway. And Scott wants it in that little opening like 100 yards to the north and it's a matter of getting it there and putting it there where those wagon wheels are. Well, we don't have to cover that anymore, but you brought it up and that's the story on the sign of why it wasn't in the bid. Now I'm done.
Are you done? John, you anything for Veronica Valley? No? Well, all right, so now moving on to public comment.
I have something for Veronica Valley, I think for the bridge that does require some attention.
It's got to get recorded.
I was thinking if you put a sign there that said rusty, that's a good bridge. You know, informally, Keith, at the, at the last meeting, we talked about grants for the, for the walk.
Yep.
And since then, I've talked to John Mays and suggested maybe I go and get some more information for the trust fund because I know it makes a big money. John Mays is a fellow who does that and so happens that, and Bill Ruston, who I know is the, is the, is a chair of that. And what they have every few years, can't guarantee next year, but they'll have a time when they like, grants that are under $50,000 get like, just pushed through. They have a small grant year, for lack of a better word. So I, I do think that there's a very good, I don't want to say very good, I can't, but anyways, I was encouraged talking to the guy who does that as far as handles that grant, that grant process. He is, it's got to be under $50,000 to fall into that category. He is, it's got to be under fifty thousand dollars to fall into that category. So there, April 1st was the deadline, so you're not looking at anything in a hurry, but as you're talking about your capital improvement projects, doesn't hurt to put that one in and just say, you know, if, if the trust fund decides that they, they really like the county, then they can send us some money. So I, I wouldn't just move that one out. I think that's a good possibility.
Cool.
I, I just got done talking with a fellow who handles the special ed classes for adults, mostly at TBA on another thing, but we were conversing about having their, their students have a day also at Veronica Valley, and bringing a bus in and, and getting them involved for, I'm not sure what you call it, on a special day, for, for some very, very important people. So that may happen. I told him, probably not a kid's fishing day, it's a little crazy, but maybe, maybe a few days after that. And I'm not sure if I mentioned it before, that we rent that tent, it doesn't cost much more to rent that tent for a week and a day. So if there is something that, or some program, I've got, the Lake Association, the Lake Association may want to, to use that, but it, you know, the tent's already there for like a couple hundred bucks, somebody could, could do something there for, for maybe, maybe, maybe discussing natural resources around the lake, maybe as far as ecology around the lake, maybe as far as, but anyway, there's an opportunity there. Otherwise, I'm just going to rent it, or I'm going to ask them, the committee, we'll just ask them to rent it for that weekend, and have it out of their mind. That's, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Historic rusty bridge.
Peeling rusty.
Put some neon lights out there or something.
Any other public comment?
I'm Steve Steyer of the Empire Town Show. I've seen it printed, and tonight, or this afternoon, I heard it said that the northwest corner of Miles Kimberly Park is on the south side of the road, which it is not. The northwest corner is actually a field out there. And so when you refer to Miles Kimberly Park, the north side of the road is part of Miles Kimberly Park, and I'd like to have everybody remember that.
Maybe I said Miles Kimberly when I meant Old Settlers. There was the porta potty discussion about where I wanted on the north, northeast side of the Old Settlers Park, not Miles Kimberly, if I actually made that mistake again.
Also, I'm concerned about the update to the Miles Kimberly Park plan. I was here when it was approved on that. I don't believe you got your money's worth here. And second of all, I'm concerned about there's no public input to doing this, none. And so I don't, I don't think you got your money's worth, and I don't really know why it was done in the first place. Is there a reason that this, that money was spent for this update? What is, I mean, you're going to have another, within, less than a year, you're going to have a five-year plan pre-done. So why was this done in the first place? Thank you.
Staff comments, Gail?
Nothing.
Commissioner comments?
Okay.
Anything?
I'm going to talk to John about something about, it's done, something in the future. And I really have no additional comments at this point, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Supported by Kamal? Supported by Casey? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Casey, can I ask you?
Good job, Charlie.
If you don't put the chips in, what would you want us to do there?
I just wanted to wait, and that's all my opinion. I think we're going to end up.